Order, please, stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I will take a nomination for the position of chair.
The motion, nomination, Tim Joseph.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? At this time, I consider nominations closed. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Tim, I now announce you chair and turn the meeting over to you.
You cannot do that fast enough.
I'm pretty good at it. Seven times the charm.
Wow. Well, thank you very much. Thank you. I'm honored for your nomination and your vote. Thank you. At this time, we'll open nominations for vice chair. Are there any nominations? I'll nominate Brewster for vice chair. If anyone would like to second.
I'll second myself.
Okay. Are there any other nominations for vice chair? All right. Saying none, consider them closed. And all those in favor of Brewster for vice chair, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
I oppose.
One opposed. All right. Abstention. Okay. And one, two, three, four, to one. All right. Motion carries. All right. Board secretary. Open nominations for board secretary. Anyone would like to make the motion?
I'll nominate myself.
All right. I'll second that. Anyone else for secretary? For the ones, not twice. All right. Saying no others, consider nominations closed. All those in favor of Kathleen for secretary, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions. All right. Thank you very much. Next, public comment. If anyone's here for public comment, just good old fashioned hello, how you doing? All right. We'll have that again at the end of the night. All right. So, this is organization day. We have a lot of technicalities and RSA's to follow and things to say out loud and enter into the record. First things first on our agenda, we have BCA, which is our board member ethics. You will have a copy, I believe, probably in your packet. Brewster signed his and give it back to me. I sent mine. But this is acknowledged, the signature sheet there is acknowledging, oh, we do have mine. Is acknowledging that you have read these board member ethics and shall, to the best of your ability, adhere to those statements and considerations. And so, if you can sign that, I will sign that and Amanda will sign that as well. Any questions on that? All right. All right. And next, March 11th voting results. This is really just, this is just public acknowledgement of the results, right?
Yes, this is just for information.
From information alone, we thank the community for their support of the budget. I also thank the community for the support of the support staff contract. That got a wider margin of passage, so. Great for that. Thank you very much. Those people work hard here in our district and they live here in our towns. And we thank the community for their support in all those warrant articles. It's really important for our kids. All right. Next thing on our agenda, board member indemnification, my favorite thing to do every year. So this is, this is the thing they gotta read aloud, I believe?
Yes.
Yes. All right. So, "The members of the Mascoma Valley Regional School Board and its employees and agents act as agents of the district. None of these individuals should be placed in a position of personal liability for the performance of the responsibilities vested in them by the voters of the district and state and federal governments. In order to protect the individual members of the board, its employees and other agents, and the educational interests of the community, the board will purchase public school funds in the absence of governmental immunity or in coordination with governmental immunity, adequate insurance to indemnify board members and agents of the district for their official actions and services to the school district. Nothing herein, however, shall be construed as obligating the board to defend, indemnify, or hold harmless any person who violates the scope of office or otherwise engages in criminal activity, official misconduct, fraud, intentional or willful or unwanted misconduct or acts beyond the authority but properly vested in the individual." All right. We don't have to vote on that.
No, we don't.
It's just reading it into the record. That is RSA 31:105. Next thing on here is, oh wait, this is the indemnification I have to read. I have to actually read the RSA. Yes. Well, all right. Did a cup of coffee before I left. All right. RSA 31:105, indemnification for damages. A city, town, county, village, district, or precinct, school district, chartered public school, school administrative unit, or any other municipal corporation or political subdivision made by a vote of the governing body indemnifying safe harmless for loss or damage occurring after said vote, any person employed by it, and any member or officer of its governing board, administrative staff, or agencies, including but not limited to selectmen, school board members, charter schools, public school trustees, city councilors and aldermen, town and city managers, regional planning commissioners, town and city health officials, overseers of public welfare, and superintendents of schools from personal financial loss and expense, including reasonable legal fees and costs, arising out of any claim, demand, suit, or judgment by reason of negligence or other act resulting in accidental injury to a person or accidental damage to it or destruction of property if the indemnified person at the time of the accident resulting in the injury, damage, or destruction was acting in the scope of employment or office." There. So that is entered into the record. Next on your agenda is your right to know resources. If you're not familiar with right to know, there is a lot of things as a public body that the public has a right to know about. That includes communications between school board members. So your email is right to know under RSA 91A. And it's good practice to put that in your email policy. Included in your packet is the NHSBA 2024-2025 Right to Know Law Resources. Good to just make yourself aware and read through these things, you know, making sure that we have gone through and doing the right thing. So that is a guide for that. All right. Next thing we have is our policy stating on non-public sessions. So we go into non-public to discuss certain matters as spelled out in RSA 91A:3. So we have to do with regular meeting. That's our policy on non-public sessions. Up next, we have our board officers, the policy on that. All right. Advisory committees to the board is our policy on that. So we have advisory policy, we have advisory committees, we have working subcommittees of the board. We can create citizens advisory committees. We create public, you know, with members of the public and members of the staff, members of the school board for, you know, various projects and things. So that's how we deal with advisory committees. All right. Next thing we have is approval of the MS 22. This is our report of appropriations as voted. So this is our certification of the vote stating that this was how much we, this is the last. Oh, here, it's on the back of this. So this is the MS 22. This is our appropriations that we put on the warrant. This is saying, yes, this is what this was, and that's what that is. So I'll take a motion to approve the MS 22.
I'll make a motion to approve the MS 22 for year 2025.
Second.
Okay. So that is in your packet. Any questions or comments or anything on that?
Just gonna pass around, sign it.
I got the, yeah, I got the one to sign. I got the, I got the one that Amanda handed me. So I figured that was the official one. But, yep. So that's, that's the very high level where we're putting all our money, so. All right. All those in favor of accepting the MS 22 as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Abstentions. All right. So go ahead. I'm just gonna pass that. Sign under your name. Sign that's your name. Keep track of that. Most of the time, I do not go this fast. This is just, because we have a lot on our agenda. All right. Next thing we have. Run it right through this. Just be a challenge. Oh, it's not in my, it's not in my packet, but girls' hockey fill-up.
Yeah. So, similar to how we instituted a boys' co-op with Lebanon two years ago, we were looking to see if we could do the same thing for the girls. We currently have a young lady who plays, played this year, but she played on the boys' team because we did not offer girls' ice hockey here. Stevens is leaving the Lebanon Kirsaj Stevens Girls Co-op. And Lebanon has contacted me asking if our young lady would like to switch over. After chatting with her parents, she decided she would like to switch over and play for the girls. So we're coming to you asking, is it okay for us to do the girls' program? We would do the same thing. We have a current ice hockey club here at Mascoma she's part of already because she was with the boys. And that would still run everything through the boosters. The parents would pay for ice time and all that sort of thing. The only expense for the district at all is like a minimal, I think it's like $25 per sport that we pay. So we'd be paying that piece of the pie and that's it. The parents would pay for ice time and all that other stuff.
Cool.
So we're just asking if it's okay for us to move forward with that co-op.
Any questions from the board for, for those who don't know, who are new, this is our, I mean, this is our first meeting. So this is Steve Stevens. If you're not familiar with, he's our athletic director for the district, for the high school here. Any questions for Steve?
I have a question. Do you foresee some more interest in the numbers of young women that would want to join?
So right now, we don't, to be quite honest. There's not a lot in the pipeline of kids that play youth hockey for girls. And I would say hockey is one of those games where if you're not starting it at an early age, you're not learning how to skate at an early age, you can't just kind of decide, I think I'll try ice hockey this year. Doesn't go over very well. So I really don't anticipate that we will have a lot and we may be three years and done with this, to be quite honest. But Lebanon is aware of that. Right now, it's, you know, it's us offering them Montana versus Stevens offering them nothing is, is good for them. But yeah, I, I'll be quite honest, I don't, I could be wrong, but I don't foresee this going.
I know there's a large number of women that play the ice hockey in the Upper Valley.
Yeah. So you never know. I mean, it might, once the word is out that we have this, you might start to see some, so it's possible. But as far as looking down to the kids who are currently playing youth and all that, like we did with the boys, we do have a, quite a bit of kids coming, but I don't think we, we have one. Oh, thanks. So we, we have one young lady.
All right.
That might be coming along.
But you know, like, she had a good story in the paper and, you know, now like that we know she'll be on a girls' team, maybe it'll get more interest and stuff like that. Is she a freshman this year?
She is.
Okay. So she's got three years.
It's a lot of three years of her own.
Well, women's hockey is a very fast-growing sport. Pro league is starting, all that stuff. So there's, it's high swing, so, yeah. Any other questions for Steve? All right. Take a motion, or entertain a motion on that.
I'll make a motion that we approve the participation in the girls' ice hockey co-op with Lebanon.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor of approving Mascoma joining girls' ice hockey co-op Lebanon, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions. All right. Go get them. Thank you. So that's, that's great. All right. Up next on our agenda is national trip funding. So Thomas Griffin's here.
Hi.
Cool. Take it away.
He's a teacher. We're going on a trip pretty soon, April 9th we're leaving, and then we'll back to the 13th. We are going to Nashville. We're gonna be doing lots of things there, but one main thing we're doing is a competition for the Heritage Foundation, which is a pretty big competition. They have them kind of everywhere. So really, every, what we're looking for is just paying for the bus from here to Boston, which is a coach bus, which would be nice because we have like all these instruments and all that sort of thing. Have the bathroom on it. And it's already gonna be a super long day. So, but I got, it's $3,746 for them to do both getting picked up and coming back. And so I'm just asking if, I guess, there's like academic field trip money or somewhere. So I'm just seeing if you guys would be willing to.
Okay. And, yeah.
Go ahead. So how many students will be participating?
Twenty-nine.
Oh, that's a good number, right?
So it's band and choir that are performing in the competition.
Any other questions?
Make a motion so you can discuss this.
Okay, sure. Go ahead.
I'll make the motion so we can discuss this.
Sure.
Okay.
Sounds good. Okay. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
All right. So.
So, good.
So the cost is, the cost was what, $3,000?
$746.
And that's, that's for the band?
Band and choir, yeah.
And the choir? And that's coming out of the, what account would we have that money in?
I would say if they're in a competition, it would be academic team travel.
Okay.
They could access, what we have for funds in that.
What do we have for funds for that?
It has $20,000 in it right now.
Okay. So you're looking for like $3,800 to cover everything?
And that's just for the travel piece? Like you guys are?
Just, just the bus.
Just, just for the bus?
Yep. Everything else is already.
What's that?
Everything else we've already fundraised.
It's just one day?
So it'll be driving us to the airport and then taking us back out.
Oh, okay.
So you have the fundraising, you have the funds for everything else except just the travel from the airport?
Yeah, just this last part.
So yes, to clarify, like, the, the district has not spent any money on this trip whatsoever, right? Yeah. You fundraised the whole thing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's impressive.
Yeah.
Well, it isn't really, it worked a lot. A lot of it goes to the, because of the music boosters.
Did I understand correctly, it's only for one day?
No, it's a, we're gone from the 9th to the 13th.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
This is, so in our motion, why is, why is it to give you guys $3,800 out of that fund for that, for the bus transportation you need to pick you up and take you down and bring you back?
Correct.
Correct?
Yep.
Okay. That's what I got the motion on. Floor board. Okay.
Got it.
Any other questions or any other discussion for the board? Saying none. All right. All those in favor of the motion to approve up to $3,800 for Nashville bus to and from the airport, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. All right. You're good to go.
All right.
Rock 'em. Have a good trip. See you before the course. All right. Up next, we have Destination Imagination, Global's in Kansas City fundraising request. Mr. Oliver, how are you?
I'm Matt.
Hey, Matt.
So we have, I don't know, who knows what Destination Imagination is? Most of you have been here. Some of you haven't. We have two teams of kids going. One team is five kids, one team is two kids. We have seven, seven students going to Kansas City. It's the National Global Competition. There are already 38 states that are committed to going and 27 other countries. That number will grow. Basically, what we're here looking for is the academic, some academic travel money as well. In the past, you guys have supported us with our plane tickets, rental car, and our Airbnb. And the travel going from the airport. We are looking at, we will be able to raise the rest of the money ourselves. It is $11,000 just for the competition fees. We have most of that covered already. So what we're looking for, the number is 15-2. That's based on all high prices. Because as plane tickets get bought up, they go up. So I just kind of priced everything on the high side. So that was, that's where I am with that. Are there any questions? Yes.
Could you clarify 15-2? Are you talking 15,000?
15,200.
Okay.
Yes.
So if you look at your.
Breakdown of $600 per person per flight. Again, I found some for around $450, but the high side was 600. So I based all my prices on hot, on the high, but we would shop for the low. Does that make sense?
Can I make a motion to discuss?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
I make a motion to discuss the Destination Imagination.
I'll second it.
All right. When do you guys, when would you guys be leaving?
The competition is May 21st. Sorry, competition is May 22nd through the 25th. We would leave May 21st. And come back on the 25th.
Matty, did you, did you check the prices for yourself? I mean, did you check the prices your own or did you go through a travel agency to try and get prices?
I've checked the prices on my own.
Is there a chance you could check with a travel agency?
Yeah.
See if it'd be, get a better deal? Because I would think they would be able to help you out.
Yeah.
You've got enough to do with work here. I mean, I would think you would, that would, you know, we approve some money for you.
Yeah.
Up until a certain amount. I would say get a travel agency to help you out and it'd be probably less than
what you're, what you're trying to get. Okay? Okay. We can definitely do that.
All right. I don't know. I, I get more questions. I'll wait, see what other board members have to say.
Okay. Anyone else? Yeah.
So you have a note here about a balance in the DI account of $12,000?
Yes, we have $12,000 in one of our DI accounts. I don't remember which account it is because there's a couple different ones.
So that's accumulated over the years, right?
Over the years that we fundraised for. We're hoping to save 3,000 of that for next year because that's what our, just our state competition fees will be with, based on six teams. We had four this year. We have, we're looking at like we're gonna have six next year.
And you said that would be like due in August or October?
Yeah, that's when we would pay that. So we, we, what we're looking at now is we have $9,000 in that account that we would put towards our.
Your expenses for right now and then?
Expenses for right now and then.
Yeah.
Because I have to have the competition fees paid by, hold on, it's right in here.
You wrote April 16th.
April 16th, I have to pause it, and then the remaining is due in May, and they haven't given us a definitive date on when in May. But it's usually early May. So.
That's a quick turnaround.
Yeah.
Matt?
Yes.
Where are the DI counts held at the schools? Is that your student activity funds? Because I'm not seeing that amount in there, so I need to connect with you about that. I don't see $12,000. I see more like $3,000 combined.
We'll talk about it.
Okay.
So you've got to verify the figures. Can you give back to us on that? Give us that date?
Can, can, can you?
I mean, we, we have never had a problem with getting the money to go. We have always been able to fundraise to be able to go. We've just gotten support from the, the board for the last three years when we've gone with the travel expenses.
Yeah. The tricky job is meeting all those deadlines.
Yeah.
They are quick.
I mean, the most you need is 15-2 right now.
Yeah.
But it could be less than that.
It'll, it'll definitely be less than that.
So, Tim, what, what if we, if we capped it, you know, I hate to give a motion, say, you know, go to 15, up to 15,200. I mean, what, where are we getting it? What is that coming out? What account is that coming out?
Same line, the 20,000.
Same one with?
Yeah.
Same one?
Yeah. So I mean, that, and we don't foresee any other academic travel in that.
Okay. So.
I don't, I don't know.
I don't know, but.
You don't know what's that going on?
What did we spend last year? Just, just the DI that was 16, 837.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
All right.
If you, you know, can you wait two weeks to come back with us or you want a motion, you want something?
We can, we, so we, I mean, what we can do is we can give them permission to fundraise.
Yeah.
Right? Because they, that, that thing gets started on now. We can, we have time to, to discuss the travel stuff. Can I ask what you're gonna be doing for fundraising?
We've done letter writing campaigns, and I know we're also planning a dinner. We usually do a dinner where we make, I think we made close to $3,000 at that dinner last year. And then with the letter writing, we get a lot of donations that way.
Did, did, did you send a letter, did you get permission to send a letter to Dorothy Burns?
Last year.
Last year we did. Can we have permission for that again?
Well, that's what, that's what we're here for.
Yeah.
Yeah. I would, I would, I would, I would say yes, if it bought Greece, it would, I mean.
Do we know the turnaround time? I'm just thinking with like timelines here, what door, I don't, I haven't personally written anything for the Dorothy Burns Foundation, so I'm just wondering, is there a timeline?
I know. So normally, this, this year, DI was a little different because of a few different things. So they ran one competition. They usually run two. So we're about a month ahead of where we've been before with coming up with this money.
That's my thought, yeah.
Okay.
We're, we're pretty early in the game for this.
That's better.
Yes.
Yeah.
I see better than that.
Any other questions from the board? So I do have, I do have a question on here. It says, question, which adults may go? Because I'm looking here, it says seven students and six adults.
Yeah. So we had a lot more coaches this year.
Yeah.
So we don't need that many adults to go.
Okay.
That's, I think that's more of a conversation with me and Amanda.
Yeah. Is that, that's something we could have. That's fair. Cool. All right. What's your, what's your flavor on the board here? You guys want to give them permission to fundraise now and then think about the travel? Or do you want to go for the travel so that they can start shopping? But knowing that we do have a board meeting on April 8th, so we do have that one as well.
Do we, are we confirmed, you're, you're saying, Michelle, that you're, you don't know where the rest of those funds are? Or they're not?
The $12,000, I'm not sure where that figure is coming from.
Okay.
Well, I, I would think they can, they could go fundraise and, and do, and do the letter, letter writing and get, get out to Dorothy Burns and whatever else they plan on doing. But, but I would say, and also get hold of the travel agency and then put yourself back on the agenda for, Tim, put you back on the agenda for two weeks so we can definitely have a, somewhat of a figure to approve to give you.
Okay.
I can't, I can't, I don't want to come up and say, all right, I want to give you up to 15-2 right now because it might be less. And if we, you know, if we can save some money that way, then you get some others, other ways of money coming in.
And then we'd also have a better idea of how many coaches that we could send in too.
We're not gonna take that many coaches.
Yeah.
So clarification, the travel fund is coming from academic travel, right? Does that limit it just to travel? Like, the expenses have to be separate from it, right? So we can't really approve anything more than what's in the account right now. Correct?
Yeah.
And it should be limited to the travel. I did not realize that we had thrown the Airbnb in last year. That's my error.
Lodging, yeah.
Yeah. So lodging, I think, is a little bit different. So typically, we have just used it for the transportation part of travel.
I might be mistaken. I don't know if it was.
Well, I think your numbers are about the same.
Are they?
So Airbnb wasn't there last year.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
And it might be knowing that we didn't have anyone else that year. It was late in the year.
Yeah.
So would it work to go ahead and process a request for the 15-2 under the academic travel and then possibly have another request at a different board meeting if there's additional money needed? Or does that mess up the timelines?
I don't think so.
I don't think, I don't, I don't think he needs, he might not need all 15-2.
No.
He doesn't need it, he won't take it.
Well.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the 15-2 for travel for the Destination Imagination trip.
Okay.
I've already made.
I thought you, I thought we talked about this.
I heard that.
Joseph's motion to discuss, that was it?
Yeah, that was it. Okay. Did you want to second that number, Brewster?
Yeah, I will.
Okay.
I will. But it's, I would just want to make sure that it's including fundraising and everything else.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, we're not, yeah, yeah. There's still got a lot of ways, long ways to go because they got to pay those other expenses too.
Wait a minute, I'm not clear. 15-2 does not include anything but travel?
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
It does include the Airbnb.
Yeah.
Kathleen said travel.
Travel. So the 3,400 that's on there for Airbnb.
So subtract that off.
We'll bump that down.
Your motion.
Yeah. But we'll still keep it at 15-2 right now if you don't, if you don't spend it for travel and there's no problem with leaving it in the account.
Okay.
That's a good point.
For travel only, Kathleen? Yes.
Perfect.
Perfect, yeah. But the amount is 15-2. Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And Brewster, you seconding that?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay.
And I just want to make sure it's all clarified because we're trying, we're trying to do a number of things here.
That's right.
You know, and, and most, it's all included.
Yeah. The call is, that's why we have her. She, I give her minutes to people to show them how to take minutes. I'm like, you look at these minutes.
No, no.
And Brewster, I do have it in that if they do not need the 15-2 for travel only, that they will not use what they don't need.
So is this included, he can do fundraises?
But then I'm getting, yeah.
Yeah.
No.
It is just for the travel part?
Just the travel part. If you would like, we can do a second motion to approve the fundraising request. So that's what we're gonna do next, okay?
Okay.
So, all right. So although, okay. Any other discussion on the travel funds? All right. All those in favor of approving up to 15,200 from the academic team travel fund for Destination Imagination to travel Global's, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Abstentions. Now I'll entertain a motion to allow them to fundraise for said trip.
I'll raise a motion for Destination Imagination to fundraise. I'll raise a motion for Destination Imagination to fundraise first trip to Kansas City.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, yeah, seconds, stand, seconds. Um, any further discussion on this? So this gives them permission to write letters of asking things like the Burn Foundation and other foundations for support, they have permission to, you know, do things like dinner or auctions or whatever else you're gonna do. Are you doing an auction, I don't know if I'm gonna get rid of this stuff in my garage or not, so. Uh, but it's always a good time, um, but yeah, this gives them permission to fundraise, so.
You got, you got the, you got somebody to write to the Burn Foundation?
Yes.
Get that already, get that sent?
Little letters.
Because you've done it previous years, so, yeah, they've always been very generous.
I wanna make sure they had somebody, it's awful.
Cool, and the kids send thank you notes and all that, always good stuff, so. All right, all those in favor of, uh, the motion to give them permission to fundraise for the trip to Kansas City signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, abstentions. All right.
Um, Tim, one more thing.
One more thing.
I'd like to ask the board to add an agenda item.
Okay.
And that would be to approve of the trip?
Yeah.
Because this was not on the master list of trips.
It wasn't on the.
All right, then, I will make a motion that we approve a trip for Destination Imagination to travel to Kansas City for the global competition.
Second.
All right, Bruce, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, abstentions.
We mentioned discuss.
Phew!
We discussed the running.
Well, you had, I gave you a second to discuss.
No, I know. We need to discuss it.
All right. Good catch. Good catch. All right, thank you.
Any else you want?
Good. All righty, let's see here. Next thing we have on here is some agendas, I mean, not agendas, policies. Oh, I'm looking at a policy called Agenda Preparation. So, um, the base way, so second reading, final approval, um, I'm gonna talk to Martha about how to write these in here, because it makes my life.
It's jumping all over the place.
Okay. So all these recisions can't, don't need to come, not now.
There are three second readings and approval?
Yeah.
I know I saw it too.
All these recisions need.
And so all the recisions can happen after those three, but then there are recisions at the bottom that cannot happen because they are after a first.
Right. All right. Um, if someone like, there's a mo, so the second reading and adoption ones, if someone would like to make a motion on those three policies, we will discuss them in a chunk.
So I'll make a motion to approve for second reading policy B E D C, policy B D D, policy B D D dash R one.
And, oh, sorry, and this one too.
Did I skip one?
Yeah, it's okay.
Sorry. Policy B E D C.
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, do it, okay, those are all the second reading ones.
Yeah.
All right, do we have a second?
A second.
All right. So, um, so for two members of the board for policies, typically what we will do is when we have the first reading or the second reading, we'll, for, because these are a lot of motions and a lot of letters to read, we'll just take a motion to, to deal with all the policies at once, and if we have to break one out, then we do, um, but otherwise we just kinda go through them one by one, um, and questions or anything, so. Um, these are a lot of housekeeping ones on how we run meetings, things like that, uh, and for example, you know, this one we revised, B E D B, we Agenda Preparation, we revised it three years ago, after not looking at it for a long time. But we did not make any changes after that, last meeting, same thing with B E D C quorum. This had the update about participating electronically, the specifics about that.
Can you sleep at night, you can read these?
That's right, these are, I read them last night.
Did you?
Yeah. Um, all right, and then B D D, Board Superintendent Relationship, um, delegation by the Board of executive powers, since superintendent provides freedom to the superintendent to do her job, so, it's a cool, I like that sort of thing.
I believe you.
All right, any comments, questions on any of those? All right, all those in favor of, uh, approve second option, second reading and adoption of policy B E D B, B E D C, B D D, and B D D dash R signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, abstentions. All right, now I'll accept a motion to rescind, a big chunk of policies there. So just the first page of policies, someone would.
One, two, three. I make a motion to rescind
Yep.
policy B D D, policy B D D B, policy B D A, or C A. Did I miss one?
Yeah.
Policy B D D D D and B D D A. Love that.
Oh, no, it's okay. B D D, B D D A. Well, no, we're not, wait, what? Wait a minute, why does she have, why do we have policy B D D, old policy rescind? Sorry, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you because I'm just looking at this, because if we are replacing B D D, then that just replaces policy B D D.
Say that again, Tim.
So you see how the second thing she has listed here is policy B D D, old policy
Uh, where is?
On, on the agenda, the second thing on the agenda.
The second thing on the, oh, oh, please, okay.
Second policy listed, sorry, second policy listed on the agenda.
Yeah.
Old policy, but we just put in B D D as our second reading, it changed names.
So your old policy, I think we just chose to do that, um, because the old B D D, hold on, um, was called Agenda, and it really needs to be called Board Superintendent Relationship.
Right.
So maybe it's clear as mud, but we had rescinding the old policy, but then adding in the new policy.
Oh, oh, I see, I see.
Just because the titling was so different.
Okay.
So our old B D E was titled Agenda, the new B E D is titled Su, Board Superintendent Relationship.
Oh, no, yeah, I, I see that, I'm just wondering that since we just replaced B D D, like, doesn't that just replace it?
I think to be safe.
Be safe.
Rescind it.
All right.
I'm, I'm good with either, Tim?
That's fine.
I'm good with either.
Okay. All right, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
That's okay.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, but.
Not talking to me, you Joe.
So, yeah, I guess we can rescind old B D D.
Okay.
Do you want me to restate my?
Yeah, sorry, sorry, yeah, start over.
Can't wait.
Okay, here we go. Um, so I make a motion to rescind policy B D D, B, B D B, B D C A, and, let me see the name, B D D D.
All right, do we have a second on that?
B C D. B C D.
All right.
And B C D, yes, sorry. Missed that.
Okay, we just got this.
Okay.
So it's.
For total of five policies.
Five, all right, so B D D, old policy.
Yep.
B D D A.
Yep.
B D D B.
Yep.
B D C A.
Got it.
And B D D D.
And B C Ds.
And then B C D.
I think everybody.
And then B C, so six.
Six. Yes.
Yeah.
One, two, three, four.
All done, Martha.
This one.
Six.
Oh, this one too.
That one too.
Oh, okay, there are six.
Second.
All right.
It'd be really nice to throw like.
So we got all six. And we have a second? You second this?
Who is the second?
Kathleen?
Kathleen.
All right. This is why policy is so much fun.
Hey, we're cleaning it up, we're almost there.
We're cleaning, we are cleaning this up. It is a long pro, this is, this is a lot of work, I really appreciate this. All right, all those in favor of rescinding all those policies as we just stated signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, abstentions. All right. Next up, we have one that we would, uh, like to waive the first and second readings and move immediately to adoption, um, and this is for policy A C F Food and Nutrition Services. We typically do this type of thing when the School Board Association lawyers say it's a really good idea to stay in compliance with X, Y, and Z, and so that's what the reasoning is on this. So I entertain a motion on that.
So I'll make a motion to waive policy A C F for the Food and Nutrition Services.
To waive first and second reading?
That's what you mean.
Yes.
Okay.
And then, so we're gonna adopt this.
An adoption, please.
And adopt, yes. Beautiful, thank you.
Okay, do we have a second on that? I'll second, all right. Discussion on here.
Uh, I will let you know that we are doing this because, uh, we needed the new USDA statement added, so that's the reason for the quick push-through of this one. So the only change to this policy was the new USDA statement.
All right. Any further discussion on that? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, abstentions. All right, so up next we have some first readings, and, um, what these are for, so we'll do a first reading of a policy, present it here in public, we discuss it, this is kind, it's not really a work session, but it allows the board members to ask a little more thorough questions, do some research, and then we bring it back following the, at a future meeting, typically the very next one, for the second reading and adoption. So that's how those work, um, so I'll entertain a motion on some first readings.
So I'll make a motion to approve a first reading policy B I A, New Board Member Orientation, and policy B I B, Board Member Development Opportunities, policy B K, School Board Memberships, policy B J, School Board Legislative Program, and, let's see, there's anymore, policy B K B, Board Member Health Insurance.
Perfect.
All right, do we have a second on that?
A second.
Okay. So we'll just go down the list here, um, so new school board, uh, member orientation, this is, looks like a new policy, or, we have had it on the books, but it has not been reviewed in twenty-eight years, so, this looks like the sample policy from the School Board Association, which is great, because they provide us with a lot of training, um, so if they have not reached out to you already, they may have, I'm not sure, um, take them up on any trainings that they offer, we are members, we're paying members, so you get these classes for free, um, if you are interested in any other things that they offer, talk to Martha, um, at the S A U. The other thing is that we can look at getting one of the, um, uh, people from H B S A to come out here and work with us on, you know, anything, like do a new training session for us if we're struggling with something, or if we just wanna learn more, um, that is always available to us as well, so, we might wanna do that, like the new board member orientation, but I, I highly recommend you take them up on the new board, uh, member stuff, so.
So, Tim, how will we hear from them?
They get, we give them their email addresses.
Correct, you'll get emails.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, so if you haven't got your email set up already, and, uh, talk to Kamala.
Yep, there's that.
They have, all right, good, good deal, good deal. Any questions on the new board member orientation? This is a great, um, way for you to like, look at this, think about this for the next two weeks, and then be like, oh, is this, you know, is this something we need, or, you know, whatever, or we, you know, if you come back in six months and you're like, this was better, whatever, or if next year, when we have another new board members, say, hey, you know, that would be better if we did this, or didn't do that, so. All right, and then the next one, policy B I B, Board Member Development Opportunities, um, so, again, we haven't looked at this in twenty-seven years, but, um, these are opportunities for us, like the school board conferences, workshops, things like that, just like what I was talking about, um, encourage you to go to those. Uh, next one on here is School Board Memberships, um, so that is, we are a member of the New Hampshire School Board Association, and they, um, provide us with a lot of training, they also provide us with a lot of information, they also keep tabs on what's happening in Concord for us, um, they're able to tell us, you know, things that are coming down the pipeline, and able to give us a lot of legal advice that is very valuable, so, they are great advocates for us. Oh, and they are also, they also have a delegate assembly every year, so we're gonna have to pick somebody to send that this year, too. Any questions on that one?
Just that it replaces the previous one.
Yeah, just, uh, replaces the previous one, because they're renumbering these. All right, so, uh, policy B J is School Board Legislative Program, um, so this is, again, just talking about legislative obje, objectives, um, and we can take positions on things, um, so we have to be unanimous, yes or no, on them, but we can certainly do that for any types of, you know, make a statement, you know, that sort of thing. Questions on that one? Okay, and then B K B, Board Member Health Insurance, um, you tech, we technically are allowed to purchase health insurance, um, at our own expense, and so, uh, if you are interested in that, please talk to Martha, correct? in that, please talk to Martha, correct, she'll point you in the right direction at the SAU. But that is just offering it, so. All right, any questions on any of those policies for first reading? All right. All those in favor of accepting policy, BIA, BIB, BK, BJ, and BKB for first reading, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, abstentions. All right. Fun times. Let's see. All right, so board subcommittees, so we have several committees that we need to fill out with just school board members, and then we have a couple committees that we need to have a board member representing us on there. So, finance and facilities is, deals with exactly what you think it is. I know Brewster, you have said you'd like to be on that again.
I am, yep.
So, Brewster, I will be on that, typically, board chair will be on that, anyone else would like to be on that? They do meet, it does meet at 1:00 in the afternoon on Wednesdays, so it's during the day, we are kind of locked into that time, because we meet with people who work there at the school, so.
Yeah.
But we can meet remotely if we need to. The time, yeah.
Yeah, the time is the top part.
That's the top part, so. All right, we have plenty of the evening, so that's good. Diana, are you interested in that?
Finance?
Finance facilities?
No.
We don't do the budget, we're not making the budget in that.
No.
All right, well, I can, we can ask Dawn if we can too, I mean, I don't think she works during the day, so I'm not sure if she's able to, I don't know about Dawn either.
Dawn does also work during the day, we provide her with the remote access.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
So, yeah, we'll just, we'll get somebody at some point, but we might, I looked at my schedule, so right now, Wednesday's is still okay, we might, you know, go back to Tuesday like we were before, maybe, if we could, you know, because it's springtime, well, we'll just go with this, I already looked at my schedule already.
Okay.
And now Wednesday's is okay, but we were, Tuesday, we moved to Wednesday for, because of Vicki, I mean, because of Cookie.
Cookie?
Cookie, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
That's why, long time.
Long time ago, it's funny how meetings get set up like that for.
Well, we moved it because she couldn't, you know, she couldn't make Tuesdays.
Yeah, yeah. All right, we'll start with forum, and we can, we can ask around, things like that, so.
I'll be the alternate. I don't want to be the alternate.
No, you can be the full member if you'd like.
Put me down for the full member then.
Kathleen, yeah.
Sold.
There you go, going once, going twice. All right, so budget committee rep, I can commit to that, but we do need someone to be an alternate, budget committee.
Is that at 6:00, are those at 6:00?
Yeah, those are 6:00.
I can be an alternate.
Okay, cool. I should say that the way that we hold our budget committee, that we work with our budget committee, is that school board, we post it, and school board members are encouraged to attend the budget committee presentations, so that way everybody sees the same data, and everybody sees the same presentation, it is the budget committee's budget, so they are the ones that are working on it, but at least the school board members there, they can ask questions, and just have it, it's just good to be in the same room, and it's been a successful model for us, so, just so you know, you don't have to make every single meeting, they're typically Mondays, like every other Monday at like 6:00, and there's about four or five of them, I think, between like late September and early November, so.
Tony's doing it.
I'm doing the, I'm doing the rep, and then Joe will do the alternate.
Okay.
So. EIC, so this one is another daytime one.
I'd be interested in that.
You'd be interested in that, are you able to go to that?
Yeah.
Okay. EIC, both of you, you did, all right, Martha, Kathleen, Diane, all right.
Dawn has typically been on that, has she, was she, I shouldn't give me any preferences for subcommittees.
Let, hold on, let me, she did, let me pull this up. She'd like to stay on the communications, she's not, if she's done EIC, then before.
She has.
She has.
Yeah.
And if she'd like, I mean, we can put her on that, and if she doesn't want to, then I can figure out, like I can try to figure out, I can make it some days.
So let's put Dawn on there.
Yeah, let's put Dawn on there.
Yeah.
Okay. She would like to stay on communication, and she'll do co-curricular too, so.
Okay.
All right, so the Hartford CTC rep, have they met at all since?
Yeah, they've been meeting, unfortunately, the dates always conflict with our other stuff that we've got going on, so.
What is the date of their meetings?
You don't know until 10 days before.
That's correct.
And that's why it's so hard to move around, because.
Is it you right now?
Yeah, I need the calendar, I can't, you know.
They used to have a system, I did.
Yeah, it was like.
It's only quarterly now.
Okay, well, that's good, but can they come up with like a regular schedule? Like, because that's kind of silly to announce a meeting 10 days before and expect everybody to make it.
I kind of understand why it changes, and we don't have a definite date, because there's so many different people.
Right now, they think it's on May 6th.
May 6th, okay, thank you.
That's what Lebanon thinks they're going.
Okay.
I just did their meeting minutes last week.
Okay, thank you.
Well, they think they're going to the HACBC meeting on May 6th.
May 6th.
Okay.
Do you want to try and do it again?
Sure.
Okay, cool. And that is just our liaison for when we can get in touch with Hartford.
They have a lot of different disciplines trying to get in there at the same time.
They sure do. All right, so the NHSBA representative delegate, this is a good one, if you are new, if you'd like to do this, what this entails is you are a delegate to the delegate assembly, which is in October every year, and that is all the members, school boards of the School Board Association meet in Concord for a morning, and you go over like the association's business, and you vote on resolutions as to what the School Board Association will advocate for that year and going forward, they have a big list of like all the things that they'll fight for, for on our behalf, and as a school, as a member board, we can submit things to the delegate assembly, saying like, I think that, you know, NHSBA should advocate in favor of free school lunch for everybody, and so we put that in, and then they, you know, put it in their packet, and then all the different school boards that are there at the delegate assembly vote yes or no on our proposal, and so, you know, there's rationale, the board does or doesn't recommend it, that sort of thing, and there's been plenty of times where like their board of directors says, no, we don't think this is a good one because of this, and then, you know, delegate assembly says, well, no, we think it's a great idea, so we're going to put it through, but it's cool, it's, I've done it a number of years, I should also tell you that I, tomorrow night, I'm actually starting a term on the New Hampshire School Association Board of Directors, they've asked me to join, so I'm joining them, so get some Mascoma representation down there in Concord, but that being said, I do need another person to be the delegate to the assembly, so if that interests anybody.
So is that only?
It's just one day, it's literally one day in October, it's a Saturday in October, I want to say it's the second Saturday in October, but I don't have it in front of me.
I can do that.
You want to do it? All right. And, you know, typically like the meeting or two before, like they'll send out in early September like the packet of all the proposals, and then we as a board will kind of look at them, and we'll tell you like yes on this one, or no on that one, or we, you know, we agree with that one, or don't agree with that one, that sort of thing, so, that way you have an idea of what we're thinking, but we also give the delegates some free rein to be like, you know, things happen, people make amendments, people change things, you know, use your best judgment based on, you know, what we talked about, so. That one. All right, looking down the list here, we have negotiations personnel, we do have a teacher's contract to do on that this year.
I'll record it.
You want to do it with me too?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, negotiations, we can see, that does have a lot of daytime meetings as well, so, we'll start with that, and we'll see how it goes, anyone else? Joint loss, this is a quarterly one, this is one that's required by the state, this is like our employee injury committee, so any workplace in the state has to have one of these committees, and so, yeah, that, what does that mean, like Thursday afternoon, like an afternoon?
It means quarterly, usually on an early release day.
Oh, yeah.
At about 2:30.
Okay, and they're typically like a 15-minute meeting, and.
Half an hour.
Half an hour.
Depends on how many people get hurt.
How many slip and falls.
So it is, I mean, that is perfect.
And, and, you know, recommended actions, stop the walk, stop the walk, stop the walk.
You guys, I, if I put in for this, I, I, you know, comes up the last minute, I don't know if I can make it, so, I don't, I don't want, you know, you put me in there, but I just, huh?
Do you want to do it?
Well, it's just, I need to know the exact dates, but we.
Yeah, that's fair.
It's not like, it's not almost as bad as the Hartford thing.
Yeah, that's, no, that's fair, I totally, I totally understand that.
Put me in there, and I'll just get the bonus for doing that.
Can they like lock in the dates for the?
Uh, we typically have sort of locked in, but not till the beginning of the year.
Beginning of the school year, okay, all right, well, we should have the rest of it for the year then, so.
Huh?
We should have the rest of the dates for the year set.
Well, we're, yeah, it should be, I mean, it's like that for a year, I know that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, so put me, that's it for me.
All right, well, if you can't make it, let me know.
Maxed out, must have been assistant superintendent, I don't know.
All right, co-curricular.
That's when you need it.
Dawn said she would do that, and we, that is, we have one, one member on there, or two members on there, how many have we had typically on there?
Uh, we typically have had one.
One, maybe two?
You could have up to three.
Yeah. Anyone else would like to be on co-curricular, that is a joint meeting with other people, so we like, who else is on that?
There's a public element to this, right?
Yeah, yeah, a public element to that.
So we'll, Danielle Thompson will continue to be on that as a representative from the boosters, Royals Athletic Booster Club, I would assume that Mr. Thompson, now that he is the rec director, will be joining us, we've always invited.
Oh, is that Mr. Jovers?
Bridgette Labrie, who sometimes joins us for that, as a representative for Friends of Masoma, we have been struggling to get a student rep on there, so my suggestion would be to move that a little bit earlier, so it occurs during the school day.
Okay.
Those will be quarterly, so about every other month, so, you know, to move it even to 2:30, so that I could have a kid come, because most of our kids that have volunteered to do it are busy after school.
They're doing co-curricular meetings.
They're doing co-curricular.
That's a really good point.
It's often a struggle for our athletic director and athletic coordinator at the middle school, because they too have to work after school.
Right.
So.
Yeah, is there a better time, like, I mean, that's something that they can meet and figure out a better time for themselves, I mean, morning is okay, like the kid could come out of class for that sort of thing.
Yeah. Yeah, even changing it and out. Yes, it's true.
Oh, yeah.
Want to do it during, like, from the release?
The kids aren't here, Brewster, it's early release.
Right, kids aren't here.
Oh.
I know, they're the ones being released.
Well, I'm sorry, I mean, I, I looked over, and there was, nobody, clearly no major school year, they asked, oh, what's going on, I didn't know, he was working off or something.
All right, well, if that's something that, you know, and, and, so they're next, so you just had, do they start it up again in April, do they meet again in April? Because communications met in March.
Yes, uh, yes.
Okay.
No, communications is in April, that's next week.
All right, so that does give us some time for co-curricular, that's easier.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Yeah, because I think we can get, so if that's something you're interested in.
Where do they meet, they meet, they meet up here?
Yeah.
Yeah, here at the high school.
Kind of easier for the kids.
Yeah, so maybe the first meeting can be closer to, I mean, stick with that meeting time, I guess, to start, and then figure out what's better for all the adults during the day, because we know where the kids are during the day.
Hopefully.
Hopefully, that's right. All right, so we got Dawn on there, but that is open for another two board members if they would like to join.
For communications?
For, uh, no, co-curricular, sorry, communications.
I'll do communications.
You want to do communications, okay, and Dawn said she would like to do that as well.
I'll also do professional development as well.
Awesome, okay.
Did you miss the wellness committee?
Hold on, you guys, I'm still in the middle of communications, hold on. I know, hold on, hold on, all right, um, so communications with Joe, Dawn, all right, might as well just finish communications, is there anyone else that would like to do communications, it ends up being communications and technology, because we talk a lot about tech stuff.
Yeah, I will.
You want to do it?
Sure.
All right, cool. Excellent, and so we talk a lot about, you know, communication strategy, and things like that, how the public relations, a lot of that. All right, wellness committee rep, Joe said you'd do PD, okay, I'll do PD, awesome, wellness committee, that also meets during the day?
It is, it's another one of those where we have a lot of community involvement.
Yes.
We have Hillary, comes from DH, and Danielle will also like to join as a member of DH, Friends of Masoma, with quite a few administrators on here, yeah, Danielle can't, she just can't leave.
Just writing her name down.
She just can't leave, this also is another committee that we've struggled to get a student rep on, and they wanted that, you know, because we do have Fresh Picks, that provides the food in our cafeteria, so they're, they attend, so we were looking to get a student rep, so they could give some input on different things, so that might be one that I would suggest happens a little bit earlier typically, but it's been at 3:30.
Yeah.
That one, maybe a 2:30 meeting, because we also like to include the nurses, so.
Yeah.
I don't want them out of the building for too, too long.
Yeah, I was thinking like at 2:00 or 2:30.
Yeah, if they did 2:30, you know, that would be something that could, could happen.
Anybody on the board interested in being that, the rep for the school board on that? I can do that, if no one else will, that's fine.
I have a question. Would it be appropriate to look at a eighth grader for a student rep on the wellness committee?
We would take anyone, we would take, we would take a middle schooler, we would take a high schooler.
Because I'm concerned a lot about the mental health issues that come up at that age level.
That's a good point.
And I think that they could offer a new site on some of those things.
I think if we could get it, the time change earlier, right?
That's right.
Yes, Coach Joe could join us, yeah.
Yeah.
I think we are earlier in the day, while the kids are still here, we have a much better chance of getting some student input.
The, the other thing I was going to suggest is like this, we, you know, we, we put as one of our goals for this year, increase student advocacy, and so this is a good way for students to advocate for themselves and their own needs.
Yeah.
So if, it, it doesn't have to be like locked in, like if there are two kids, like if they have alternate system. Yeah, they, they can come every other time, so it's only, you know, just spread it out.
I like that idea.
Or if, you know, that's something, this is a good opportunity for like the student government, for us to approach them and say, you as student government, we want a representative from student government to be on the wellness committee, you know, help us pick, that would be the first ask, I would say, it would be student government, and say, we need someone, so who can represent the school, your student interest, because that is a really powerful place for, you know, a kid to get up, like, and you can talk, I mean, you can totally, like, it's like, you get up, and you're like, here in front of all the adults, and you can say like, hey, this is important to us, like that sort of thing, so. All right, did I miss any of the committees, I don't think so. All righty, there we go, all right, one of some next on my agenda. School board meeting calendar for fiscal year '26, so that is in your packet here, this is our overview of what our school board meetings will look like, as well as some other important dates for us, so entertain a motion to approve this calendar.
Motion to approve the 2025-2026 school board meeting calendar, okay?
I'll second.
All right, so discuss, so yeah, this is everything that's basically, after July 1st, everything resets, we typically take, do one meeting in July, and one meeting in August, just because of everybody's schedules and such, but we do, you know, in July, if we see that there's going to be a whole lot of stuff coming down the pipe, we might add an August meeting, so this does not, you know, we might add some more meetings in here, but we have typically tried not to, so.
I think, Tim, the one liberty I did take with your calendar was to, I know, I was bold, I was bold.
You weren't bold when you're two minutes as chair of this committee.
I did, I was on it, was in November, it looked like.
Oh, yeah.
I, I split the difference for, because we had the 11th, I think the week, the, the second meeting would have fallen on the week of Thanksgiving break.
Yep.
And we had taken, we had canceled that meeting last year, and I didn't want to go that long.
Yeah, no, that's.
So I split the difference and put it on the 18th, so that goes a little against your brain, it's the third.
Yeah, that's.
Tuesday, but.
That should be okay. Yeah, yeah, and then this, we're in the middle of these weird years where like, for Thanksgiving, and Willian Falls is, yeah, really messes with it, so. Yeah, all right.
Just did it.
So this also helps us remember what reports are due, and what meeting went, that sort of thing.
I don't know, well, one next to me all the time was from an end to, she never, she never went on.
All right, any other questions on this?
I'm sorry, on the other page, I see Martha highlighted for me, the February 24th meeting that does occur during break.
Okay.
I'm fine with that, you all are fine with that.
Yeah.
To be determined.
But you're going to have committee reports?
Yeah, we'll have it.
Oh, do them in writing?
I mean, we could keep, I'm fine with keeping it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because it's just us meeting during that time, so that's, that's fine, yeah, because that's normally, we don't have vacation, but next year we will have vacation during a week.
They've moved a week, right?
Yeah, we were on the same as Lebanon, and it's Hartford, so now Hartford shifted, and now they do the New Hampshire dates, so, whatever. All right, any other thing else on that one?
That's all I have.
All right, all those in favor of approving the board meeting calendar for fiscal year '26, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, abstentions. Next thing on our agenda is to set the date of deliberative session, which while it is listed here on our calendar that we just approved, we should make a motion to set that for a date, and that way we grab that date first, and grab ours meeting space first, so I'll entertain a motion for that.
I make a motion to have the deliberative session 2026 on January 31st.
All right, second?
I'll second.
All right, this just locks in our deliberative session for January 31st, and we get it in the morning, and the moderator will determine a snow date, typically it's probably like, that gives us actually like a full week if we need to have a snow date, so. All those in favor of approving deliberative session for January 31st, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, abstentions. All right, next thing here is school board member directory update, as you see in your packet, you have a list of all of our names with our addresses, phone numbers, and the email address, just confirm that these are correct, and get them to, get them back to Martha, these are not posted online, just our, our email addresses, but these are technically public information, and if people ask, they technically have, we have to, they have to give them out, right? Isn't that what we were told?
That is correct.
That is correct, but we don't post them on the internet, we learned that lesson, so. But we don't have to make a motion on that, moderator, anything, that's just for your information, we can table this board photo until we have everybody here. All right, now back to our regular meeting stuff. Approval of minutes from February 25th.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, we're going to have to postpone that till the next meeting, both of us, because we've got only two board members there.
Doesn't matter, because you're just voting.
Abstentions count.
It doesn't?
What?
Abstentions count.
Yeah, I'll be like.
Abstentions count for a quorum.
So one votes yes, and four vote abstain, it still passes because you have a full quorum.
We have a full quorum, so we, you, me, or, or you're absent, but that's fine, because we still have a full quorum.
You still, you still can do that? You still, you still can do that?
Yeah.
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 Fine.
And you don't have to abstain, like, here's the other thing with minutes, you don't have to abstain for minutes, you can if you want to. You do not have to abstain for minutes even if you're not there. All you were doing is the motion is to approve that those are minutes of the meeting. You don't have to be like that, that is actually technically word for word what happened. That's all, it's, I'm just saying, people are feeling that bad. So, entertaining motion.
Sonic motion for approval of the February twenty fifth me, meeting minutes for both non-public and public minutes.
Okay. And I'll second that. Okay, and that's fine, because we're gonna do it to approve. All right. Uh, any comments, questions, or concerns on those, corrections? I didn't see anything on there. It was, it was great. I liked reviewing the, um, report and the presentations, and that was great. There's Williams. All right. All those in favor of approving the minutes public and non-public for February twenty fifth, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, abstentions. Interesting. All right. All right. Cool. Student goes, well, Lily!
Did somebody abstain?
You had two abstentions.
Okay, I, I heard no words.
Yeah, I did, sorry.
Okay, that's okay.
Okay.
You did abstain, okay, so three?
Three abstentions.
Beautiful, thank you.
All right. Lily! Hi, how you doing?
Good.
Thank you for sitting through all that. She gets full credit. She does get a lot of credit for this. So, um, Lily is our student representative, um, and she has been with us since the beginning of the school board school year. Um, she provides us with the written reports she'll hand to you at the beginning of the meeting, but, uh, take it away.
All right. I started off with sports. I believe I wrote finals, but I think they may have only made it to the semifinals.
No, it's okay. They made their finals. No, they didn't make it.
Oh, boys' basketball did not, no.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, they did. I'm sorry.
Me too, I was sorry too.
I was sorry, yeah.
Good job.
That's right, they didn't grade the fall, so you know, you can't.
Yeah, they did.
We had to let them.
I wasn't a ref in that game.
We didn't make it.
Didn't make it.
Could've used your help.
Could use the... Sorry, but...
Um, the group's sports information night was on the eleven. Sports tryouts are happening this week, really starting today, well, it was supposed to be yesterday, but there was, no, so. Sports picture day is on April eighth. Music, there was a concert on the seventh, and it was really good, really fun. Um, the national trip is coming up fast on April one ninth, as Mr. Ed was talking about earlier. I was working with music boosters and ordering a bunch of custom sweatshirts for the music department, like our names and our department and stuff on the sleeve. Jasmine is awesome, and still meeting every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday morning at seven. We have lots of clubs. We have the Art and Writers Guild who work together to make the literary magazine, which is now accepting submissions for art and writing in all form from students. I think the theme is masks right now. NHS just completed our second packed tea breakfast on the sixth. Um, it was well attended and a success. We're also working on planning our next preschool visit where we read them books and give them the books that we read them. AV Club, we just finished Ride the Cyclone on the February twenty eighth, the first and second of March. It was a huge success, it was very fun and successful. There was also quite a few other shows opening that same night, like Hello Dolly and, like, NCTP's show, I think that was Hello Dolly.
Yeah, that was good, perhaps, yeah. A lot of people, yeah.
The AV Club also visited Lebanon Airport on the sixth. Math team sold slices of pie on Pi Day to raise money for their math team.
All right.
And they have their last meet on Thursday, the twenty seventh, that was tough. Student council has been working on our monthly teacher appreciations. We're also planning on, there was a wonderful day on the Thursday that was a snow day, so you weren't able to do those activities. So we're moving on to, um, the day before April break instead.
Oh, good.
So, and calling it spring thanks, so we've been working on that a lot. Juniors are working on planning prom and prom favors and everything. Seniors, I think, are working, we're working on planning like fast trip and everything. Interact Club is still working with Lebanon Rotary and Interact Clubs, with Windsor Rotary and Interact Clubs as well, for meal packing and service projects with Rise Against Hunger. And they're planning on participating in an Earth Day cleanup with Canaan Conservation Committee on April twenty sixth. They're hoping to have their annual dessert auction on, in April, as well as another final prize, um, competition. Robotics has their last competition for district championships this weekend at UVM. The first, um, FRC event to be held in Vermont. Drama Club, um, they just had Little Shop on the twenty first, twenty second. And I think twenty third probably.
Yeah.
Um, I put the date in wrong.
It definitely.
The performances went well and they were very fun to watch. It was a huge success, um, well-attended, with over four hundred attendees.
Nice.
And other news of the school, many awesome field trips have been happening in the last couple of weeks. Graduation is officially three months from last Thursday.
Are you ready? It's not realistic.
Crazy. Um, Project Grad has held two fundraisers, a silent auctions, auction and selling roses, and they're currently selling hanging baskets and planning the character breakfast in May.
Oh, yeah.
They also had a cornhole tournament on the twenty second. There was a lot of more professional cornhole people than I anticipated.
Did it attract people from outside the district who like, came in to like win big at the cornhole tournament? Really?
Well, I mean, I think, they might have been local, but...
Yeah, but...
They had like team shirts and all that other stuff, they were like...
T-shirts, like, whoa.
Like team shirt, like, like she's like, they come in in team shirts.
Yeah.
And these are just area schools?
No, they're just people, it's like put in like, yeah, public, right, yeah.
A bunch of people.
I've seen professional cornhole on TV with sponsors and everything. I think, I think, where's Steve, let's... Anyway, sorry, go ahead, Lily.
Really good. Um, senior surveys have been going out and scholarships have been working, worked on. Guidance always checks in with the students and they have like, I think lunches still for the seniors, and they have check-ins sometimes during the SAT prep days for the other students to check on the seniors and how it's going, so. April break is coming up. Fourteen through eighteen. SAT prep and like PSAT prep is held on Wednesdays, and those are approaching fast as well.
Cool.
I believe, I think that I'm...
Yeah.
I think, I don't know.
School day, what, April second? Is it during the school day?
I think so.
Yeah. Yeah, so we... So we make it so that, yeah, they take it right during the school day, they don't have to pay, we make it free for every kid, all that good stuff. And it's by what, four schools, with your scores? It's pretty nice. Any questions for Lily?
Um, I do have a question for you, Lily. Do you know how many kids, it's okay if you don't know this answer, are on the robotics team? Do you know why I have any kids?
I, for some reason, I say three.
So I, I'm just curious, it just came to me that we may need to provide them with some academic train, team travel funds.
Yeah.
So if the full fifteen gets used by Destination Imagination, there's no funds left for robotics, so.
I don't think there's enough, but I don't know how many there are.
Yeah, three or four might be okay.
Yeah, yeah, I know that like, one year it was just one kid, so it was just like, eh.
Yeah, and they chose not to go to the test.
Yeah, so, you know, we'll see. All right. Uh, any other questions? So as you can see, this building is very busy. The kids are always up to new stuff, um, it's a dodgy brand new, like, there are copies of this of the literary magazine. Um, I think there's some right up there, so grab yourself one. This is really cool, they just started this, this past year.
Yeah, that was the last one.
This, yeah, so this is, this is the one that came out in the spring. Um, but yeah, kids do a great job with the art and the writing in there, so I highly encourage you to take, take one of those for, as board members, so. Cool. Any other discussion, question? All right, thank you, Lily. Um, finance and facilities meeting, um, meeting minutes, this was back in March. It was only the meeting of this month, seems like it was forever ago. Uh, they did a lot of extra cleaning during break, they do, you know, with, with everybody being sick in the building, they do a lot of disinfecting. They got a cool bathroom cleaning cart that can like disinfect and clean a bathroom pretty quickly. Um, so that'll be for this building and that building. Um, doing more floors, working on tile with Berry Tile for April break. Um, we got a new dishwasher, saw the CES. They did some rewiring, lights here that need to be taken care of, um, and taking care of the maintenance of the pellet boilers. The special project that we had talked about for the major systems is the venting in the bathrooms right up here. Um, Matt's working on that, but his company is getting votes. Um, we did talk about snowmobile policy, um, we pulled that out and found that that policy is really outdated and refers to things that need to be revised, revised, so we're gonna pull that back up, uh, this month, once we get some more information. Uh, this was right before the vote, so we didn't really have anything to do, we were just waiting for the vote on the budget. Uh, we did discuss cafe services, outstanding balances and confidentiality around that. Um, and Michelle did come up with a good plan, because as we accepted a gift last board meeting for, to take care of outstanding balances, uh, Michelle came up with a very nice plan, how to prioritize which accounts to pay off first, so that way, you know, it got the people who truly needed those, um, funds taken care of, as opposed to somebody like, you know, myself or Amanda, where we just forget to put money on our kids' account and, oops, you're over by ten dollars, you know, so like, we don't want that to get swept up, so. That sort of thing. Had some other policy work that we're gonna get, talk to Dave Schenler about. Talked about some other things around vocational arts, uh, culinary arts and things like that. And, uh, we are gonna talk about solar, we're gonna, I'm gonna bring some people in for May for solar, so. The ass finance facilities, any question on that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Give me a little bit more information on the culinary arts program and how it relates to vending areas.
Uh, that was just a conversation topic.
Are they cooking and preparing treats to go into vending things?
No, so Plymouth High School is, was you telling me about this? Were you saying this, Chris?
It was me that brought it.
All right, you talk, you tell about it, huh?
I brought it up.
All right, you, I can remember who did, go ahead.
Yeah, I brought it up because there's, because we can't, there's things that happen with VOTEC we can't in, integrate here because I wanted to see about integrating some programs that we could do here versus what we have over at Haffin, but, uh, we can't, uh, Haffin's got, uh... Plymouth's got a great culinary arts program, and they also got a great business program.
Yeah, that's a business.
Right next, right next door to their, their little shop that they have for kids that, after the cafeteria is closed, they can go in the cafeteria, and the business manager, he's retiring this year, but he, he has a shop that's opened up and they use it for, like, they, like, they do for the sports facility when they have games and stuff, basketball games. But that's, that's a regular store that they open up after, so, um, I just wanted everybody to come and take a look at that at some point, you have to get over that way, look at that school.
Yeah, it's like an intersection where like their culinary arts program's like, it's like a little cafe too, I think you said?
Yeah.
Something like that, yeah, so that's...
The culinary arts is just unbelievable what they got, it's, it's, it makes Haffin look, you know, Haffin doesn't have what they've got over there, but...
Chris, you're just like me, whenever I'm in a different school, like, I always take pictures and send them to Amanda, and she's like, ah, it seems around the state now.
Well, I, my, my, my reason for bringing that up is because we've always discussed about the juniors going over there, the seniors going over there, they're losing time going over there, coming back, and if we have programs here that we could have integrated here, it would have been, it would have been better, you know, it would have saved some money.
Yeah.
So, but, uh, I think, I don't know, you have to check the contract, we have to, because, but if we could get that, some of these programs here, I mean, we don't consider, we don't have a nursing program there, or we don't have, there's some other programs they have over there, automotive, we don't have that.
Yeah, which ones can we add without a huge investment, you know?
Well, yeah, if we can, you know, if we can get a culinary arts in here and, and not have to, you know, and get them to wave us going over there with that, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Because you can actually take what you got already listed here that, and, and turn that into a culinary arts place, but...
Yeah.
But anyway.
All right, no, I love it, all good ideas, good stuff. Okay. Any other questions on finance facilities? Um, for the solar, is that already part of the capital proofing?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, that is, um, that's a project that we've been looking at to try and get some solar panels installed on this property here.
Yeah.
Um, we have some money in a sustainability capital reserve fund for that type of project.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so we're just trying to get off the ground, but, you know, with a lot of things shifting right now, it's, uh...
Been hammering that for a long time.
Yeah, so we just wanna do it right, that's the thing. Um, so we had joint loss committee, you can see the minutes there, um, talking about workers' comp. You know, following up, so yes, you can see the people that are in there are people from facilities, people from this building, people from special ed, principals from other places, a teacher, you know, things like that, so. All right. Yep, please wear, as I said, lines five, seven, eight, nine, ten, twelve, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, nineteen, trip and slip.
That was, that was unusual, let's never use that many.
But you know what, that is, um, it's the wintertime. It's the wintertime.
Yeah, we never use it many at all.
So. Uh, superintendent's report, oh, Amanda, it's time for your report.
Here we are.
Here we are.
You have my written report in your packet. Um, on March fourteenth, I was invited to Cleveland State University for their Preparing for Employment Seminar. I was one of the superintendent participants in that. It consisted of some, um, overall group presentations as well as small group roundtable presentations where the superintendent was at a table and different, um, you know, soon-to-be graduates would come, and we talked about what schools are looking for. We talked about what interviews might be like, we talked about resumes and cover letters and, you know, gave some general advice to them. Um, there were quite a few, I participated in this my first year. Then I wasn't invited back, so I did bring that up to Brian, and he invited me back this year, because why would Brian forget me? There were more students, so graduating and looking for jobs, it was fabulous.
Nice.
Um, seeing a nice upturn in the people that are coming out of PSU with... Quality people coming out of PSU with, um, teaching service, so it's pretty exciting. Um, I would say I met with probably ten candidates, I would hire any one of those ten. One already had a job, but the rest were still looking, and I would hire any one of those ten, they were well-prepared.
Why didn't you?
Because we really do that hiring, and my principals told me they had other people, so we'll see, we'll see.
They give you that, sorry.
I did, I, I did, well, not during the year.
Well, we could, but you extend that.
Go ahead, that sounds good.
Whatever you need to get into that seminar every year, go for it.
Yeah, it was great. So will be, I'll take a team, usually, uh, last year was Martha. And I think it is the first Friday in April, we will go back for the job fair. So we, we are pretty excited to do that. Last year, we were there, we talked to a lot of kids, most had jobs. It got pushed because last year was a snow day on that day, so this year we're getting in there a little bit earlier. So whatever we have for open positions, we'll do there. Uh, the next piece is hiring, um, very, once again, pleased to see that the candidate pool is, is much, much better than we've seen it in years. We're also out early, um, you know, ahead of it, which had changed to the teachers' ability to withdraw retirement, so. Um, and then both productions, very proud of the kids, Ride the Cyclone and Little Shop of Tours, very well done, very proud of the kids this year. Just very nice.
Yeah. Any questions for Amanda?
You didn't try to go anywhere around the school district.
My head.
No, the only place you're going is down to Conca to be in Chad, the proper education.
The whole shebang.
They don't pay enough for that.
They don't.
They don't?
They don't.
How do I think?
It's a state job, that's why. Speaking of, uh, I, I, as you went to Cleveland State, I just wanted to say that if you've not seen in the news, Cleveland State is considering eliminating their entire humanities department. That would be a very bad thing for employment, so I just wanted to say that.
Oh.
That, that is a dumb idea, very bad, very bad.
Oh, okay.
Is that lack of funding?
Yeah, lack of funding, they've been told to cut their budget, and they said, well, maybe we'll cut the entire humanities department and eliminate thirty professors.
So you, you're going back, Troopie, Troopie going back next month?
Uh, yeah, we're going back in a, next week maybe.
Huh?
I think it's next week.
Yeah, it is next week, yeah.
Next year to Oklahoma State?
Yeah.
Yeah. For the job fair, that's actually...
The job fair?
Yeah.
Yep, bring the fancy, bring home.
You take, you take, uh, you take one of your principals, principals with you, or?
Uh, last year I took Rick Simula and Martha McDonald.
Nice, okay, and a whole pack of applications along the resume.
We bring swag, we bring nice, we have a little banner for the table, Martha, that's why I take Martha, Martha doesn't write.
Can you get a computer and showing like the highlight videos, like make a loop of highlight videos?
We talked about a video.
Okay, I don't know if you can do like...
Talk to Seth.
Seth, yeah, see if Seth can just get a little videos.
That's what I mean.
Oh, yeah, there is.
So you, you could go and...
Turn on the YouTube channel and hit play.
You could actually...
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah.
You can get them to commit to you, right?
Does this, yes.
Um, I wouldn't do it there, but I would encourage them to apply, and then interview. I wanna make sure that the schools have a chance and a say to...
Yeah.
Who's a good fit.
I know, okay, you're, yeah.
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 This is, this is your, you're, you're promoting us, you're out there, come, come work for us, it's a great place to work, so. Cool. All right. Um, business administrator's report, um, Michelle, you have, we have your report in the packet, but take it away.
We do have my report in your packet. So with the budget and support staff contract passing on March eleventh, um, myself and Patty, our HR administrator, we've been working hard on the new health insurance that's being offered to the support staff. So Patty has scheduled, uh, a session for school care. Janet McCuster's coming in to talk to the support staff about the new orange plan, um, as well as the Vasco Mercedes Bank and a rep from Black Harbor Bank to talk about the, um, HSA that will be attached to that. So those are scheduled for April twenty third. You have the MS twenty-two report, which hopefully has been passed around in size, so I can take it back with me. So that's in your packet, and then, um, the financials are in your packet for February, and that's basically what I have.
All right. Um, yeah, was the orange plan a new change, was it yellow flyer, is that right?
Yes, the orange plan is a hypothetical.
And that's why you can have the HSA?
Yes.
Yeah. So we switched, yeah, so for support staff contract, starting July first, we'll be able to switch to the orange plan as the driver. So, that's really good.
Saved, you told me, you saved, saved some money, right?
We saved a significant chunk of money on that, and giving some flexibility that way, so. All right. Um, agenda items for next meeting, as you see, oh, it's handbook time, student handbook time, athletic handbook review, general assurances, driver's ed scholarship fund, ooh, I like that, I like the sound of that, that's good stuff. Puma, comment? Good evening, how you doing?
Friends of Vasco are still looking for scholarship applications. April fifteenth is the deadline.
Do you guys have a...
We've only got eleven of them.
Do you guys have posters that you can, that they can hang up here and stuff?
I was hoping that maybe the, no, we can't, actually.
No?
No. No.
Did I see posters for like other scholarships and stuff up there?
Guidance.
Guidance.
That has to be guidance.
Yeah.
We can't put them in here.
Yeah.
You have to ask for them.
Right, right. Well, I get, I will take that as your ask.
Yeah, we put it on our website.
Yeah.
I believe it might even be on your website.
Might be.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know it is, I'm sorry. But I think we've only got eleven or twelve right now.
How many can you take?
Three weeks left. April fifteenth is during your vacation, so. And we're very strict about April fifteenth.
Yeah.
We've given you, we've given you three and a half months to get it in.
They, they'll take as many people as want to apply.
Yeah.
Right?
Pretty much.
And you'll figure out how to do it up.
Close to twenty of them.
How big is this class compared? It's about the same as last year's class, size-wise.
I think so.
Yeah, it's about the same, okay. And you gave out how many last year, fifteen or twenty?
Twenty or so, yeah.
Yeah, cool.
And the other one is a question.
Yes.
Have we heard anything from Cafe Services as to how the billion-dollar cut in USDA is gonna affect us?
I have not heard anything.
Because it's ninety percent of that's going to be fresh vegetable.
Yeah.
It's not going to be canned stuff.
Yeah.
With fresh picks or whatever you call that, that's, that's where it is, it's local farmers who are gonna get cut the billion dollars.
Yeah, I wasn't sure how much we had, cuz I know there were like big programs, and I don't know that we are in a program to like do local farms, cuz I know other schools in the area were, so I'm not sure.
Right, like USDA.
Yeah.
I just like Cafe Services gets.
Yeah. Yeah.
Fresh vegetables, and that's gonna cut.
Yep. Yep.
They cancel the billion, billion dollars with contracts.
Gotta get that money back.
So. That could affect the cost of food.
Yeah, that's for sure. Anything?
That's it?
All right, cool, cool. All right, um.
And before we go into non-public, could I ask that you take a vote and move item, what is that, twelve, up before the non-public session?
Personnel?
Yes, the resignation.
Oh, yeah.
Nomination.
The green sheet that we have here.
Yes.
All right, I'll take a motion to move, to change the agenda and move up personnel resignations and nominations to next on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor of moving the agenda, as I just stated, sign if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so next on our agenda here is personnel resignations and nominations, so you have your green sheet. So this is how we receive the ones in the public side. So this one on your single sheet, that's landscape view. This is our, a few renewals and all the retirements and or resignations from various positions. You'll see a lot of those pop back up and being refilled in the next subsequent weeks. I always trust that Amanda has a plan. And then you see some staff nominations up at the top as well. Coaches, things like that.